Ninety four point seven, Asempa FM Sunni. Ekosi Senre no Asun, ya se atinase. Ifi simeyokopimse nunsia nefan ebepo. It promises to be an exciting show this Tuesday afternoon, the eleventh day of February twenty twenty. Ekosi Senre Senrebon, live in Kumasi on Jinyame ninety four point five FM. Here in Akra, we are live on Asempa ninety four point seven FM. Mideidi ose ibonsu. Yama munya na kwa bebe, yewede munya na asse, samori efidie na toha. It's Ghana's biggest and the most authoritative political, social, current affairs talk show, Ekosi Sen Live on Asempa FM. Muamou Kumasi, Sen Americania Tujia, no Jinyame FM Sunni, owo ejo swa, ejura, ejura rather, eh haye. Muamou ejura, mutiye ye, ejura station ye, Ne JFM, yes, Ne JFM ojejura. Owo Finson swa Time FM, owo Boasi OFM. And that's for, for the Ashanti region, oko bono region, oko Ahafu region, oko bono eastern swa. Ewo Storm FM, ewo sunyane, ewo Agro FM, owo Brekum, ewo Cruise FM, owo Akomadan, ewo, and it is Swa FM, owo Japekron. Omunya na fe Ekosi Sen Live. Eko the northern part of the country, ABC Radio Tamale, Khan FM, ewo Salaga. Uchwe mbesen, kosekendi Takari in the western region. Eh haye Aseda FM, yama munya na kwa ba. Amaloni de stations no, Edoson. And unimse, jume diye ke siye biyakoso, ewo Kumasi, the great hall of the Kwamen Kroma University of Science and Technology. Eh eh, the result fair, ah Benyi, edis, esiwone nisso. And a town hall meeting in Kumasi, into the Vice President, who is Chair of the Economic Management Team, Enya Kwaing, address say gathering no. Eh de, eh Benyi promises awo ye ye in their manifesto. And eh, they were more motimiya fulfilled over the past three years, or the two year. And onua kase seventy eight percent of their manifesto promises, ne ya diya Benyi etumi ayeh. Ah yamea domiye fe, jume diye nina live, ewa Asempa FM. So inti muamusha as yet ye ye, eh free ten AM, ABC, eh some thirty minute ago, no. Mahu said ye nioma, esee ekoe. And ye nde ayatina si, yebe diye no hun komobebe, already eh, a huge, you know, discussion, ashase on social media. And your opposition elements were reacting to what they heard eh from the Vice President. Yebe diya Samkobana neviye, ewo Ekosi Sen jume diye, so would pick it sector by sector. Na fe ya she, add the reactions from presentation, ah, omampenyabedi tri eh ye ye, in Kumasi. Quite a detailed presentation, eh, omuchre muaweno eh 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 eh, na evidential value ne was struck because omu adi eh photos. Eh adi pictures eh just to show nioma muakama Ghana phone yina etumi eh obi. And yebe sheni ye di hun komo, ene evye. Mini, they are out here from the Vice President, what do you make of the presentation itself and the content thereof? Inti, eh, Semo amampenyabedi tri di Tujia, no eto say, ma eh unswajinche. Ya WhatsApp line eh, zero five four six three eight two two eight seven, zero five four six three eight two two eight seven. That's our WhatsApp line, please keep the messages coming through. Muamusha on Facebook Live, oko facebook dot com eh forward slash Asempa ninety four point seven FM. Obetimi ashay live streaming on Facebook and then please eh post your comments. Na ye nshen kambo be part of our discussions, more and more Twitter, share your tweet with us. Ya handle eh at Asempa nine four seven, at Asempa nine four seven. You can come through with your, with your tweet. Me yame personal handle eh at Philip Bonsu, owo Instagram Asempa ninety four point seven FM. We're also on YouTube, inu baso she live on YouTube, eh, your channel on YouTube, no eh, Asempa ninety four point seven FM on YouTube. Obetma she live ewo ho ensu. Moa eh, eh ya mupe se mutiye radio online, oko myjoyonline dot com. And adamonline dot com, obetmet ye ye, ewo ho, mideidi ose ibonsu. Meda eh ye in production team, no asli for making this possible. And ye wu Dominic Kissi yeboha, Nana Chum Berema, Nana Kwadade Urenchi, Jackson inti amoa. Ye wu Eric Opare, bebe friend DJ Yeoyo. DJ Yeoyo, and ye wu Queen Star Ejapon, that's our production team. Omahini Kwabana Santi, bebi awo biye eh chiya, we beye, mideidi ose ibonsu. F Pack Tablet Boy, eh, eh free Amponsa, Ifa Pharmaceuticals, ye wu Obapa Product, ye wu Agbeve Herbal Hospital, Life Plan Estate. And A to Z Auto Service Limited. We mune shaya na sameye, the sounds of our time, Ebremo, ewo Ekosi Sen so. If we may hear some segment, nensu, Freshman, Fresh Lady, Fresh School Capsules, eh free, Sassen Pharmaceuticals, Ecobank Ghana, Bell Malt, Bath Bioengineering Services. Direct City Homes, we mune boy eh meh meh hear some segment, Ebremo. Yeah, one on one interviews, eh ya ya ye, ye eh interviews on trending issues, eh ya eh ya eh, ewo jume diye yusono. Las Palmas Food Center, Provident Insurance, Engosra Group of Companies, Trelidor Baglar Proofing, and Ostec Real Estate, and eh boy eh meh ye no, Ebremo. Ya discussion segment, nensu, Bank of Africa, and Casapreco Company Limited, omode Awake Mineral Water, Abejja Swamunde boy eh. Ma eh de, ye eh discussion segment, nensu, Ebremo. And Ekosi Sen Sunni, your CRMG Radio Program of the Year, and eh wasuguswa utiye. Mame nsi eh WhatsApp line, eh subio eh, zero five four six three eight two two eight seven, zero five four six three eight two two eight seven. Muamusha on Facebook, no Edoson, inti o Alex eh free fa, oh say, I'm watching you live from Woodbridge, Virginia, USA. Thank you, my brother. Kenneth Boa, so watching you live from Cincinnati, into oko USA, ye bo na Cincinnati, Ohio. Oh say, keep up the good job, Obi, thank you. Eh Positive Change, ewo Medina, oh say, this is from Positive Change, we are not blind, we have eyes and can see if truly. You have worked like the way you wanted us to believe. Asking Dr. Baumia to organize a whole lecture and to tell us the NPP's achievement is just a waste of state money. Eh Positive Change in Swajinche, and onodi free Medina, and Ebremi. Eh Richard Queku Jock eh, oh saying eh beye on Facebook, thank you. Ye wu Ala Pique, oh say Ghana's biggest political shows, Obi, keep up the good work, Ala Pique, thank you. Real Ambole, ensu eh sheye eh on Facebook, eh, thank you, my brother. Trump Junior says, good afternoon, Asempa, good afternoon to you too. Ben Amekbuleto, Amekbuleto, ensu eh sheye eh. Tete, buawolo eh yawi eh, mia minya bakope, tete eh, good afternoon to you. Mideidi se bibiya ekoe. Eric Hassan is also watching us, good afternoon. Ye wu Nana Buachi, oh say, good morning, Obi, I'm watching you live from the US of eh, Fawaz in Amasaman, listening to us live from Amasaman. Oh say, Obi, after listening to Baumia, one can tell that the NPP is the best managers of our economy, we have performed better eh, ononi diya diya ba. And no Kobna Ebbo, you are watching us, thank you. Dennis Amoakon, Aquesi Apia Boating is also watching us, William Odro, and David Komi, oh say, good afternoon, Obi, good afternoon to you too, my brother. Joe Plunge is watching us well, Ifea Owusuwa Asamoah, good afternoon to you. Omono Asamoah says, you are live and colored in Hamburg, Germany, thank you, my brother. Edward Asafu Ejei, also watching us, Eric Hakuna Matata, ewo Kofaridia, good afternoon to you. Wave Free Lex Quessi Blanksen, oh say, yet another day with Ekosi Sen, God bless you all, God bless you too, my brother. Ye wu Ebosen Akwason, Ebosen Akwason, eh shosu udianano, eh 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 eh. Eh Evans Boachi, also watching us on Facebook, says, the Vice President's delivery today is to me the best I've listened to. Anybody with contrary view should just respect eh and come with a fact and figures and not with insults and media host. Should also insist on that to sanitize the media space eh from lies and propaganda. Rainbow, ewo Kasua, is also watching us, Farukin Tema, good afternoon, Woodman Odamme. Eh munya na muh sheye eh, Victor Bosi Boating, yada munya na asse Constance, oh say Owusu, says, good afternoon, Obi. I'm looking forward for a good program today, thank you. Nicholas Nda Anyima says, I'm watching you live from Kuwait, Kuwait, wow. Eh Free Konto says, I'm watching you from Germany in Duisburg, Germany, okay. Nana Buachi says, the whole world is watching you, good job, Obi. President Anado and the NPP are doing a great job for the benefit of Ghanaians, okay. Banahini George, oh say eh watema eh, eh chiya o strong kon eh, nipano Edoson. Yada munya na asse for tuning in, Sir Obama in Pokwase watching us, Prince Henry in Kofaridia also watching us. Eh, thank you all of you guys for doing the listening and also watching us live on Facebook. Eh kase eh, ye bubudian, adie ebesa ye. But keep the messages coming out, find time and read all of them eh for you here on the show. Ekosi Sen Sunni, and most importantly eh eh, what do you make of the Vice President's presentation? And eh, insama utiye, and eh evye, bomade nse, odi eh munsemo ebebre eh, na fe eh, ye hu said ye nioma esee ekoe. Eh o messages no eh here, we want you to be part of our show and contribute. We say, Obi, tell Dr. Baumia that the talking is too much, happy fortieth birthday to Nana Ansah Ayao, a Queen Mother of Hamana Se Traditional Area. God bless you eh, and it's from Sir Prince, ewo Ayensuano, thank you, Sir Prince. Ebem from, oh say Kwabenya Welder Junction, can someone tell the Vice President? Okay, and ti, we nse muh she on YouTube, right? And ti muamusha on YouTube, nensu, ye mu munya na kwa be, de munya na asse. Eh, please keep watching on YouTube, say de ba kanoko YouTube, just search for Asempa ninety four point seven FM on YouTube. Obetma she live ewo ho ensu, inti, we have Kwamen Kroma, for example, watching us on YouTube, oh say, good afternoon, Obi, good afternoon to you. Kelvin Bastian say, Obi, may the good Lord guide and bless you eh, okay, ye wu Francis Owusu, onenso eh sheye eh. Eh Ebenezah F Dan Kwamo also watching you from Stockholm, Samuel Madison, inti nipana Edoson, muamusha on YouTube, no, yada munya na asse. Mayen Kwamo manzi, eh shashe with a eh set of interviews, yebe shashe with the Information Minister of the Republic. And imse jume diye koso Kumasi, no, the Ministry of Information, the Ministry of Monitoring and Evaluation. And eh, the Regional Coordinating Council in Ashanti Region, eh bo mo eh, edis eh jume diye no eh ba. The Honorable Kujopon Kroma, Honorable Akwaba Ekosi Sekins, ne bokodiye.
Obi, yamea domo, now swa eh.
Yamea domi bibiya, bibiya ekoe eh. Eh, ye kase, mo rye, anase muguso.
In fact, ye rye, ye two FPK and USC campus are on this.
Oh, okay, okay. And basically, apart from the main thing eh eh, Vice President's presentation, no eh, what were the other things he see? Woh, and san akwaya, senaba back to the presentation itself.
I mean, the entire town hall meeting, eh platform, eh ma abainya, kwenya, ibu akuntatro manfor. Now manfor swa say, ndisana, di sebiya omode abrabain. And your first one ayaye eh me, let me say, ma follow how ayaye be in other parts of the country in times. But a few we, ye eh ife atene, ife atye wu Kumasi, ewo KN USC. And um, and eh, and as a few is omampenyabedi tri na eh di enin, ebua konta eh de eh ama eh. And eh di, and you focus eh on eh eh manifesto promises, three hundred and eighty eight, no. Eh infani eh tine ayababedu, and so bonse, oye eh few specifics, etre, the biyali, you know, in the beginning and eh di ayaye woh only ababedu. Owe no ma de general picture eh across the various sectors, no. Ife eh swa ye wu result fair exhibition, because for example, tebiya utro manifesto musa eh, um, ubeboha ekya fo, mpyayo akon enimi. Akuntabu no ube kate, mbo ekya fo, me ekya fo, kya yo akon enimi, seven, the planting for food and jobs, abba ebboha ekya fo. Inti watke say, delivered, and as I say, diya unyiri awo te delivering. Two year, nintu sansu one say, result, eh say. To be who say, ube ba result fair, na te no, na detail swa wu food and ministry, say eh, ekya fo si, eh tine abo omom output, akosie, and na te. Te no, let me say, very five minutes ago, it could be a result eh eh exhibition, no, and no. Swa ministries, me departments, me agencies, me assemblies, me yine, eh, so, and also eh gwa bo, nteni wahha. And imse mo reporters, wahha, omusubit to me eh, a follow up stand by stand, may eh diya ote wo bo, no so, abregana phone yina.
Hmm eh, me- member back to the, the substance material, the content of the presentation. But two questions, eh, eh tefu eh she on Facebook Live, eh diya ba, ba kun eh free eh Kujopon Kroma. Oh say hello, Obi, kindly ask the Information Minister, how can we get the presentation delivered today to critique it? Eh, Obi, presentation, obenyano wahin.
First of all, eh manifesto tracker, eh eh eh, and the website, no, so let me say, delivery, delivery dot com dot GH. Let me say, that's the website address, a manifesto tracker, na kaza dawa, obi atumi eh perusi, eh hun, the various promises are eh eh, eh ne, bebe ababedu, or those promises, no. Eh, and we encourage the central forces, eh hun, eh diya obi atumi eh perki bi. And then also the various ministries, yeah, omamanti exhibition, ewo hase ito, also available to provide a detailed eh results of each of these eh interventions, eh, where do man. Omushe available to provide those eh results for all of us.
Hmm, I have one other message again on Facebook, eh free Positive Change o Medina. Oh say, Obi, we are not blind, we have eyes and can see if truly you have worked like the way you want us to believe. Asking Dr. Baumia to organize a whole lecture and to tell us the NPP's achievement is just a waste of state money. Eh then abekache, Obi, to say Positive Change o Medina.
And let me say, fifteen to question, oh besides eh, that's a government need to tell a story. Because if work is done, people will know, politics, money, and yena ta. You must tell your story, nobody will tell your story for you if you don't tell your story. Komai beha moni ye kaya ba, kose mlini, eh ayaye ne ya diya, one, na we eh wa, you be never come out. Two, ukae Ghana mea kun na, oh say, probability and accountability, ashay, trene say. Oh say, abain ibu akunta, abre biyatre Ghana for. In accounting for the awa ye, you tell your story, the awa ye no, oh so to be bo, we go, ye wu say, eh diya eh diya mea mino kase, ne say eh, atime yina asse. Inti me dumaa ayaye eh wu fo asse. Abain amohu deura eh diya meti, bebe ne say, diya mi me wu saabai ye ya, ne say, wabi si eh school bakua ma eh wu atime yina asse. But abain chani mponi, kahu asse, me dumaa wa ye yina, meti, ne fiya me wu say, ayi. Da ye school bakuno, be si ma eh wati me yina asse, ne to, wa ye di wahha, wa ye we wahha, wa ye we wahha, wa ye we wahha asse. So wakanase ma, nama ti asse. Eh diyo, in the political economy, Enya unkwaning ipa owo political economy, no. And to bonse, opposition party eh komo diye, eh kato, so say, oonye fe, oonye fe, oonye fe. Several society groups eh draw attention, say, omu, you say, ha ne, wote wa attention, ekoe. And you say, ukaa no tumua, wu swa dumaa wa ye, Enya diya obi akramp obiwa na te, obeti, because you could end up being overshadowed by kasa ne reportage from eh interested parties. And so, hinti, eh, eh say, wu swa abre biya, no, we dumaa wa ye no, ubebo eh wo de ro. I'm not sure swa biya kate, abain biya kana nun tumu, na unhu pi say, ne dumaa wa ye no eh, amanfor, and eh bebo wo de ro aman no. And eh, eh, sa kankere dumaa nke, ne say asse, inti, ye eh, eh ne diye, ye bebo wo de ro. Deura eh bo no, ye de eh hu, this is a set of two abonting, Obi, as we eh to me eh, say, Asempa, we eh kate, on tumi ye ye, and eh, no amampenyabedi tri eh. Oh tre, me ayin tumi pa ensanka, eh, ni na o website, no so, you are, those are, project, eh, 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 eh. Diya ya deliver any, diya ya deliver no, oka bo ma, that's about seventy seven point seventeen percent, rounded off to about seventy eight, eh percent. Ife ye ye buye akunta, Obi, oh, that's eh, so, okay, where diya ma ye ye. Ife yamfa, bebe so from kahu, and ayen ye ne say, ne say, eh, be tumi ne be sangko no. But eh cannot be said, eh, abain kana mi tu, and no diya ye possible.
Eh eh, seventy eight percent based on mum manifesto tracker, no eh, me sheh, communication eh ba, even before the Vice President spoke. Now eh waso say, mo promises, eh, three hundred and eighty eight, eh, no correct?
Yeah, no correct.
Me- me kai poster eh, Patrick Stevenson of Imani eh ye ano pe, no, kase, omu atimani eh kai five hundred and I think eight promises. Inti eh, why, why, why is that disparity, meaning so one say.
Eh, me didi say, oh, no be to me, I publish it, omu five hundred and I, wu swa five hundred and I.
I think five zero eight.
And ti, omu be to me, I publish it, so I five zero eight, yeah, 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 I publish it, eh, three eh, eight eight, you know. Yeah, the manifesto, now eh, eh, those promises, no, yeah, the account. Obi, you say there's somehow, stand, coming from somewhere, cannot stand if I go, no, so, or this are big and abba. And unti na eh kani, eh kase, enkoma eh be, it is gonna be about eh data. See eh ye de eh data, ato abonting, if a Vice President can say, we encourage to be amu ami ninkomo no, Enya bufonya tokwa. Obamiye di nkomono, so do data ba, ye ye three eighty eight, me I publish it. Obi, say eh five something, oh no, so, extra, no, oh no, so, so say eh, promises, no, on from the count. Oh say, eh, 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 politics, no, no, and as a memo, no, no, eh, oko fo, expectations. Expectations be different from promises. And ti say, me, manse boshe, me menmuna me ya, me buwa akunta at the first step. Ife ye no na to kase, but me expectations, eh, 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 we, 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 eh, kahu. Inti me di, we, 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 eh, kahu, nama meja wa, itu mpono uti asse, eh, oh, first of all, the bossa, I'm saying, eh, oh, measure, ah, no metu. Second, wu swa expectation, and also, what eh kahu wa, wu expectation, eh, 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 to wu measure me, wu, wu expectation, no. And also, be to me, eh, diya hun komo, but as a now, eh, three eighty eight in the manifesto, eh, 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 to abonting, no. So this is eh, promise, proof of do, eh, eh, me didi, so, no, so to me, publish it, eh, we can all examine the data.
Already me share eh, the feedback and reaction on social media eh, ba kun amehun from, you know, the opposition eh element on social media. Eh eh, on the, the content of the Vice President's speech, eh, because eh, so also, for example, bebe kase eh, afi Ghana phone yina, eh be ya kwaing. Eh de, on mobile phones, ato prepaid credit from ECG ne, eh, they, they make the point, eh, it's, it's, it's nothing new. And that from twenty fifteen, ECG has started piloting, eh, and ye, eh, 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 what will you react to?
I say, no, I kase eh manifesto promise, because there was no even the manifesto. Oh kase, eh fa digitization, no. And no tre, ye ma hu doa ayaye eh, afah digitization, oh, obobobi bebe eh, specifics. We eh no say two things eh, in fact, be, na wachiba akuntem krambo, no, obesai, akaku, be, eh, 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 abain any ECG. Eh eh, as part of the digitization, eh, no, and no kah eh, let me say, ECGDA, and then there was one other, eh, oh mention, eh. I mean, of course, we won't say be a private company, be ayeh, oh no need be da, on that particular matter, no. And no interest eh, say, abain muninara, eh ne ECG eh, kahu ma eh, bakon eh, national scale eh, eh ma abain miyano, na say, eh ma abain eh eh, abroad based one. Ofa digital property address system, eh, for example, Senka Google Maps, oh, ah, no, no, private company, na eh, eh, Google Maps. But abra, ye kase, eh, percy eh eh, digital property address system, no, it included the mapping system, eh eh, mapping system, eh, to abonting. Ife unswanso, and no, to me, free ambulance, one one two, even on that digital property address system. Because eh no, eh, the broad national projector, eh, to me integrate the other things into it. And ye de same as Google, for you, Google Maps, because eh no, no, unti me yes, any ma we yina, also. And to me, ba chosho, amampenyabedi tri kate, oni ECG po belonchi bibiya, eh, kai ti eh, eh, no, ye eh eh, 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 ye promises are, or accounting before. Or accounting for digitization in eh be to formalize the economy. So, the input in the next week, no, obey say, account, eh, ni say, oh say, eh, di na, ne say, but, eh, eh, no, kane, it comes from the opposition, eh, no. Eh, obviously, who expect eh, eh, no, move eh, be be biya, kate eh, take it away from eh dumaa eh, eh, dumaa eh, eh, data beast. Beamfani data, brandy, and discuss eh.
In the three hundred and eighty eight campaign, no, no, say manifesto.
Obi, you can, oh, no, I need to check a crap.
Oh, okay, eh, me, me to unka wahapa, me ba chow eh eh.
Obi, you can.
Me, me to unka pa. Okay, okay, me to unka pa. Namibusase, in the three hundred and eighty eight manifesto promises, no, as you have enumerated, no, fight against corruption and illegal small scale mining, eh kahu.
Ye commenti on eh, Galamsi.
Hmm hmm.
And eh no, oh say detail niwa, oh score no, as delivering. Say, eh kwa eh, eh, fast, oh na ye tine me, eh improve the small scale mining eh gene. Ah, na eh be mo eh friend of Galamsi, no, and no say, eh, score no, as delivering, eh, score no, as deliver. And me didi so, biya, be, eh, atume say, eh eh, adie ayensaa, eh swua, ye ko etiya, eh kun ye ye, eh nim kunimuni ye ye. But it is something that we are delivering, corruption, ye kase, eh, be, eh, ma hu doa fa corruption. And to bonse, corruption eh, specific, me say, eh, score no, as delivering, ye kase, eh, delivery eh, delivering. And of course, anti-corruption institutions, eh, kase, eh, be ti, eh, te Office of the Special Prosecutor. Eh budgetary allocations, eh, eh, de bo amaya, build the strong institutions, cause eh, eh, diya eh kano, the fight against corruption eh eh, based on building strong institutions. And also, ye be swa eh eh eh, inti, for example, anti-corruption fight, me say, eh, score no, as delivering. See, eh, no, eh, some of the specifics, eh, eh, back eh, eh, command, and opere, ye tine diwa, data ni na o website. So me did this eh in the days ahead no oh say you be yeah quite eh my eh yeah I think eh back o back o back o ney eh. Now we are validated eh sah seventy eight percent of your promises eh oh man be the three eh eh say eh please with seventy eight percent of our promises.
And eh for all the seventy eight percent eh no yeah delivered promises.
Eh eh delivered plus delivering eh I am fire and sank eh no eh no eh pending what you mean can Obi.
Me tell unka Kojio, me tell unka pa.
Hello Obi.
Me tell unka Kojio, I can hear you.
Oh be what you mean can.
Me bato eh me tell unka pa.
Hello.
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 Yeah Kojio what you mean can. Hello. Wow and eh maybe we would have to call him back Kojio Ponkroma eh Information Minister eh may well bear two or more questions be to ask. Now eh eh the interview now baby and eh we 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 speak to some other people and so on the presentations today. Where say Obi, let me use your medium to wish my beautiful Princess Nancy Akosuya Achir Martinson a happy birthday. She turns two today, last two years today wishing her the best of the days, the months, the years ahead. We love you dearly. From the Martins and eh Alex Martins eh me I'm a class rep on you ni paketoa eh nebaba eh the two years and eh Princess Nancy Akosuya Achir Martinson a happy birthday to you live to the ninety four point seven and beyond. Where say okay eh Matizon Honorable Kojio Ponkroma Siaba eh Honorable me bato eh what you mean can Sisiya.
Yes, no question me say eh eh delivered and I know me say eh eh delivered plus delivering. Sa seventy eight percent eh delivered plus delivering eh na eh twenty two percent now I am fire and sank eh no no eh score no as pending into eh this eh we eh three years and two months of your mandate. Into there are some of the promises that we are in the process of eh such as eh be now we see the example of Galamsi. We are in the process of delivering on that commitment eh yeah there are challenges in it. So what do we do eh we 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 score it as delivering you will be a why eh deliver every to say eh free estate eh what deliver but eh present continues test because eh yeah eh no oh course oh eh eh oh eh Juma. So are you are you describing it as delivered or delivering into you score it as eh plus delivering. And only eh that click.
And eh and eh for examples, so also the fight against illegal mining ah eh oh oh say eh eh delivering and how do you score add eh oh gusua who deliver.
Because no say no no you count it as something you are delivering on you count it as something you are delivering on own delivering eh.
No, but but eh add eh mo the percentages at so so into who the ninja boom say delivered plus delivering eh seventy eight percent. And I want to know say the ones you are delivering no musi then eh score eh mo deliver no.
Oh you say eh yeah waited score I don't know man be the CD can say eh yeah waited score say eh we eh marketing say we eh marketing say eh the raw three eighty eight you know eh na oh ticket back o back o back o back o in just oh be a chain oh oh three eh mo say eh yeah waited na oh the percentage is a ma eh be ah into who score out of three eighty eight. Out of three eighty eight you know who score to find out eh say eh mu ah eh na oh do on saka eh mu ah eh na why eh mu ah eh na oh gusua oh yeah. Eh mu ah eh na oh fa on sanka eh kora eh eh pending na I am fire and sank eh kora into eh yeah waited score eh eh on the raw compass three eighty eight you know eh mu ah eh. Sa na eh score.
And eh and eh seventy eight percent no absolute figures they are saying out of three eighty eight say na mo deliver na say mo deliver.
Now Obi say we eh eh who can calculate eh oh eh three eighty eight we seventy eight percent three more eh yeah eh that's about three hundred and two or so. In fact, we eh statistic now is about three hundred and two point six four. The actual statistics will be about three hundred and two, about three hundred and three of those promises.
And eh the the close to eighty now akano will be delivered this in in your final year.
The eh can say eh bring eh say I am fire and sank eh eh pending. Eh eh yeah to me eh eh yeah eh yeah eh gusua eh yeah you know no na eh say eh three hundred eh eh promises out of the three eighty eight now. Eh eh buhwa konta say eh bring with it but eh 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 eighty eight eh say eh na akaweh two eighty six now akaweh ten. Eh I am fire and sa eh can eh yes they are still pending.
Eh na na me busa sent ya no mo de monsabe can eh da ben.
Your expectation me say while sa eh cause eh Juma oh mine resources eh improve you know eh be boss eh eh be cause eh aboy oh modin eh 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 be can no na eh to me ah quite eh limb eh eh do pen pen so be.
Okay, Kojio, I say eh distractions kakarun me ja eh oh na yasine eh ding komo bio later, why?
Me bato eh mate, me bato eh mate, you tell eh you put in that.
Eh eh for a Joe so the Honorable Kojio Ponkroma eh Information Minister of the Republic of Ghana eh na moten enkano would come back to eh the the details no with him again and then oh eh lines ni mo eh shade da eh my eh and he will do this eh one more time. Where say happy birthday to Kenneth Ofeh Ansah, Special Assistant to Henry Nana Boachi, the Youth Organizer of the NPP. Where for say Obama in Pukwase to you Kenneth Ofeh Ansah, happy birthday to you. Where is to say and a very good afternoon to the freshest couple in town eh Chief Bini and Ephia Akoto. Ephia Akoto eh na Chief Bini, the freshest couple in town. Good afternoon to you. Another one there from eh say Obama, he comes through with this one and it says just when government of the South One. Um okay recovering from this eh Baskanda, then Dr. Baumia fired another missile which ascends shivers um down the spines of INDC front. Like it said in Latin, res ipsa locutor, the matter speaks for itself. Since the assumption of office, this government has demonstrated immeasurable tenacity in lifting this country from the abyss. Ah the S. Wal Muhammad administration bequeathed to us. The digitization driver loom, not to talk of a not to talk about the free senior high school Napco, one D, one F, one village, one dam can sink the NDC ship in December. Now, to those questioning the relevance of the town hall meeting, like the biblical book says, okay, like the bib- like the Bible says now biblical book, okay. Eh a town built on a hill cannot be hidden, neither do people light their lamps and put them on the tables. Instead, they put it on a stand so it can shine before others. We in the NPP won't clothe our achievement, would organize more of such fora to sell our works. I dedicate Sahkodyes campaign to all the critics regards to Honorable Ochema Boachi, Sir Obama, again eh messages eh ados. Me kwa ho mano so the Honorable Felix Kwachio Fosu eh eh former Deputy Communications Minister. And eh eh parliamentary candidate eh ma NDC war Abra Asabu Kwaman Kesi AAK. Honorable Akwaba, Ekosi say eh lebo kodiye.
Oh, Yannaya.
Bibi eh koi.
Yannaya do no eh.
Hmm eh eh be a can say eh oh she Dr. Mahmudu Baumia presentation eh na eh 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 a bit different from previous ones because eh no eh he was very heavy on data eh na oh can say Obi ah person oh challenge data no need problem. Just come up with superior data to contradict on on eh di eh no oh oh any such data, Honorable.
Let's go. Don't be misled by the misuse of data.
Hmm.
Dear Dr. Baumia eh eh no no eh medicine I don't know as statistical Galamsi.
Eh.
Which is a complete misuse of data. Oh hmm say what can one eh no one mo one eh say you tea me one.
Me bato eh.
Into eh that's true say one plus one eh eh three ah simply because ni panah con you know na why just one. So what person oh yeah eh send me eh 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 you yourself must be a breath of the data. And understand what they represent. Dear Dr. Baumia eh eh no no it's no difference from what he did in opposition. Eh ney eh 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 opposition no eh sni be eh eh the only thing I'm eh say eh 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 no no I be eh
That I'm sorry for what he has not say, I buy a lot of money, they want to show me. In fact, we shall page seventeen of twenty seventeen by the time. Oh yeah, can you see that every year, paragraph ninety years, I will quote for you what he said about the depreciation of the city. Now maybe I should do D A C, I see a change, no way we do this. When my overall for your account is okay, the Ghana P D recorded accumulated depreciation of nine point six percent and five point three percent against the U S dollar and the euro respectively. But appreciated by ten percent against the pound. Where paragraph ninety, case seventeen of twenty seventeen, ah empty before my prepared. Last year, she did not be treating by thirteen percent. If he does about another thought change the set. In a year, she be attributed by thirteen percent, it is better than Abra now or Kaka, it's here and this year. Now she do not have the shooting by nine point six percent. Again, what is the basis of this logic? I know that I'm saying, okay, maybe about taxes, okay, I'm only from taxation to. Do you remember, hey, from taxation to taxation to even more taxation. And let's say that is there, okay, I may be a C, uh, to make the point you say, I mean, like you say, they have kept their promise. Meanwhile, we were silent on the tax issue, I'm a believe you're a Ghanaian. I'm about him, I'm going to give you B A T by five percent. Now, so you know, maybe about the top last year, I'm going to ask you by accumulated twenty seven percent. I'm going to communication service, that means by fifty percent. And tell you, they are on the lovely car set, eh, by Alakha owner, it's about between thousand and two thousand Ghana. Depending on the size of the engine. Abra, I'm a pretty much a better say, say, oh, but I'm a little bit late for home, I'm a little bit late for home. And let you know, I'm extending that is there, now was, I was like, do you feel, you have a sense of love inside, never hold it. Special, sorry, national discount civilization level of five percent time, they did back twenty thirty nine, I was like, do you feel by December twenty seventeen. I'm a a standard, add infinity. If I'm a a standard, it constitutes a new time. The same way, special import level, two percent population, you know, they have extended it, add infinity. I'm a trying to say, what's this, I'm going to be corporate tax from twenty five percent to twenty percent. I'm on here, these are new taxes, ah, imposing actions on the people of Ghana and this nation. At the very beginning, I'm a, meaning ten, that's why I'm saying, as a person of Ghana industry, they are on record to have listened to the financial minister say, the five percent increase in D A T, you know, has led to a new period of production cost, if they have started that course to you and I, any convenience. Then I mean, check import G P, I'm not a normal C S, I'm a social, but it is much more expensive now to import than it was under President Mama. And this why, through our practice, Dr. Baumia, make sure see, twenty to see, he's on record to have condemned President Mama, say your food for me. About them, Troy war after show twenty five different occasions. It is in terms of taxation, borrowing, any exchange rate here, he has been an abysmal failure. I'm a no, I said, he is the pastor of all jokes, I'm a for dear, I'm a little bit of hope. Eh, yeah, yeah, that you didn't hope so, it's a shame.
But, but, but Felix. Felix, on, 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 on exchange rate and me fan one after the other, on exchange rate, Osha data or no, eh, the good, which showed clearly say, in the first term of every administration in, in the fourth republic, eh, I'm more and eh, what the best performance, first term of every administration. The best performance in terms of exchange rate stability, you know, was in the second term of President Kofu, eh, but will be a first timer. This administration eh, what the best, do you, do you contradict that?
Sometimes, I admire you, I think you allow such with just what analysis to pass.
I am, I am only asking you repression based on what he said.
That will be desire, who has guaranteed there's a good for the second term, man, they do basically two thousand and sixteen, wasn't for two ten. So why is this analysis about will be our first step, one at a time, he said, he will get a second term to Mexico. If the Ghana decides in twenty twenty, say they will vote against him, there will be no second term, so it doesn't some part of science. He cannot be looking into the future when you are talking about current situation. So the only thing we are well, eh, and now they say, ah, obviously, he changes his deal, he changed his twenty, and that was only twenty one. So please, don't repeat this ridiculousness, say, in every government system, what is you comparing him to?
But, but why, why, why is it, why is it, why is it ridiculous, sir? Eh, yeah, yeah, this is the first time, Anna.
First of all, what, what does he mean by it is a first term? It is a term, a four year term, give up. A second term is a mentally different thing, you have to go back to the election. If he is to go to the election, now you're too much one, let's say, or Kaka, post twenty twenty one, I know this, eh, a first term. But there's no first term, there's only a four year term, ah, oh, yes, yes. So that's analysis, that's why I'm saying it's ridiculous, and you see, are the things here, oh, yes, I know, and I'm actually, eh, a statistical balance. When we say, if you do the year by year comparison, it will show, say, they have a worse record. So he is bending things together in a manner that does not exist, so that there will be a basis for him to make a deeply flawed analysis. That's why I gave you the exact quote of what he told financial minister, and indeed, look at what I'm saying, between the financial minister and the vice president. So, will be the financial minister, he is the man in charge of the test. The vice was a reporter, you know, a nominal, he has no specific function, but financial minister, here you know, I mean, the role that he plays in that. So he actually is the most, actually, the voice of the management of the economy, not the financial minister, not, not vice president, so. On the way to parliament, parliament is a house of records, and place it on record, say, in twenty sixteen, the city depreciated by nine point six percent. In twenty nineteen, I cannot use this year because I fear an answer here, so the closest I can use is twenty nineteen, the city depreciated thirteen percent. And yet, somebody standing there and telling you, say, when you compare the first point to third, four is a second term, and now the one, would you not speak out for me? It's not like I said, it's a ridiculous analysis, it, it is not logical, eh, you know, the media, I see, maybe I'm trying to.
But, 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 but the point is, Felix, in the same vein, Sir Osha, the analysis on the G D P growth, then they can also argue, sir, they picked it from you in twenty sixteen, ah, now, overall, G D P eh, three point four, non oil eh, four point six. Sir, Osha twenty seventeen, eh, I'm more first year in government, overall, now eh, eight point one, non oil eh, four point six. And this are part of the G S S eh, data, Dr. Baumia show in his presentation, oh, the back twenty eighteen, six point three, six point five, twenty nineteen, eh, seven point zero, five point nine, and he, so I'm also sure where they took it from you, they would say some performance, no, eh, better, essentially, because you quoted one in twenty fourteen.
Such of all, the reason why I quoted that was to demolish the strong claim, say they have the best record of any government. That is it, if you make the claim, so they have the best record, that, that is simply not true, even if you are to accept the very difference in our by a first term, it is not true. That's why I gave you statistics figure, and I'm actually, I would say, if the N P P is ever able to achieve beyond fourteen percent growth, they can lead to the best performance, but they cannot do it because they don't have that record, that record is held by the N D C under President Lee.
But you agree, sir, you agree, sir, to sell C D depreciation analysis, maybe, 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 you agree, sir, similar to C D depreciation analysis, you know, based on where they took the G D P growth from you, they've, they've done, they've done well, done where you left off.
Of course, you need to do analysis of what has contributed before you give them credit, make about fourteen percent growth. We are destabilization, the oil sector grew by just as much as the oil sector, seventeen percent, seventeen percent. So we are destabilization, it is obvious where the growth came from, in twenty seventeen, and it had been predicted long before there's a good time to become president. After that, November twenty sixteen, so because of additional oil sector, other coming along, our G D P will be about eight percent. In fact, we shall Ghana tax office, I'm a G D P blessing. They will tell you, say, in twenty seventeen, there was an eighty point six percent growth in oil production, which led to a forty seven percent growth in, that's why I'm saying, mining and trade, which led to a seventeen percent growth in industry, which then led to an eight point one percent growth in the economy. What I said, since then, economic growth has been dipping, of course, take one side, in twenty eighteen. The same figure is projected to be the chase for twenty nineteen, this year, I am actually what I see, they will grow by just about five percent. So it starts to say, all you all know, I love a lot, and I say, eh, that's a hundred, things have gone back to normal, not be extraordinary in the performance.
But, would that, would that not be the same, okay, for our Lucy, for our Lucy, hmm.
Eh, yeah, yeah, now, eh, yeah, non oil growth, and I, I'm a, eh, near to find a bank, they can say, say, yes, they are doing something extraordinary. Even when they just, maybe, I'll give you two, change in eleven, two thousand and nine, so fourteen point four percent, you know, half of it, change from the oil growth, seventeen percent in the oil sector is very significant growth. It is, mislead me, so that's about me, I can't say more, you have the capacity to interrogate the figure and see that, I think what I'm gonna say, the comparisons you make, you know, are illogical, and the reason why he does that is because he been fair, or you're the right comparison, he will be a school. That is why he cannot compare the exchange rate on year to year basis, and it's resulting to an imaginary second term. Say, because of that, we should look at it both first term, why is the second term, I mean, eh, it is a ridiculous problem.
Okay, in the interrogation of the figures, now if he say, yeah, yeah, this is, yeah, eh, and eh, thank you for way or time and so for us, but not me per say, yeah, but, eh, already the issue about electricity tariffs, and eh, eh, Honsono eh, spent some, some bit of time on, on the eh, data. And for example, he makes the point, sir, Sir Osha tariffs are in twenty ten eh, incremented by eighty nine percent, twenty eleven, ten percent, twenty twelve, okay, say, election year, you know, increment, be a, ah, but twenty thirteen, seventy eight percent increment, twenty fourteen, twenty eight point three, six percent, twenty fifteen, fifty nine point two percent, eh, twenty sixteen, again, another election year, and he, and you're there increment, be a, by, I'm a, so I'm in twenty seventeen, I'm also, I'm one to, twenty eighteen, and eh, I'm a, so by twenty two point zero eight percent, that's decrease. And at twenty nineteen, I'm a, eh, page, I'm a by eleven point one seven percent, he said, Osha net, eh, in terms of the net effect between twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, now, net effect, near about ten percent decrease, which they think is way, way better than the more, more year, yeah, based on our data, we, would you agree?
That's what I'm gonna say. Today, it's electricity more expensive or less expensive than it was in twenty sixteen, that is a class of the matter. You see, will be part of that, I'm saying, statistics are like the key. What they reveal is suggestive, but what they reveal is vital, it is depending on what mischief you want to do. You can say anything you want about success, but the objective reality will say you're a fool. Oh, be, and then, let me direct to me, let go of from, actually, it's dangerous to see, nah, nah.
But, but, how, how do you, how do you measure that, Sir, won't share's data, where, how would you measure that?
Because we know, I have the record for both twenty sixteen and twenty nineteen. Which shows that it was cheaper in twenty sixteen than now, at least, now we talk, says, once it's thirty nine. And eh, N D C in twenty sixteen, sorry, July twenty sixteen, it was eighty eight cents. And then, it is over a hundred cents. So the basis for that claim is false, electricity is more expensive now than it was, you have the record, you can do, you can post it on your website, for your viewers, or sorry, listeners, cheating, that's why I make a local, I know, and I'm a bad, and I'm a true, electricity, I'm not say, I'm a true. In the last couple of months, I told you, about to by eleven percent, so what are they talking about?
No, but he made, he made that point, he, he.
The, the issue is not about the rate of eating, it's about whether you have increased this or not, it has been by every company by eighteen percent, I've got a chip, say, actually, it's a done in fact. You can't say many things by even one percent, in any event, there is a statement, now, now the issue, in June, October twenty sixteen, literally, says, electricity tariffs in Ghana might be the same as that in C O D I D R, and demanded an immediate reduction. Has he done that since he has been in power? And now then, and then, your ladies, you know, and you could do what they, oh, yeah, fine, that is why we should, we see, we must force them strictly to their promise.
No, but, but the point is, eh, in, in holding them to their promises, you know, Felix, eh, would still have to use the data.
And I'm telling you that, what does the data say? Is it cheaper now today, or is it more expensive now? That is the question we need to answer, there we have the basic, we have.
No, but I should not be answering that question with a greater of respect.
But, yeah, we will have, and I'm making a claim, Baumia has made a claim, that is the objective truth, based on your reasons.
No, the point is, I would, I would have to, I would have to look at the rec, I would have to look at the record, and we need. No, may say, I would have to look at the record, record, not the record, the record, uh-huh, hold on, hold on, and the point, they say, who's a record, you know, Neoma eh, influence eh, the end user tariff, you know, and yet just the announcement, the P U R C mix, you understand, and he said, maybe I'll say. Okay, and in Neoma, for example, this, oh, yeah, commercial meter, now we use, uh, we need to, we try N H I L, we try V A T, ni na, eh, come on, and so now we service charge in Swab, eh, come on, you understand, and apart from the eh, cost, now, because of the tariff, the one the P U R C announces, you know, that's the unit cost, you know, what is, and that's what you find on the record, you know, and it's a, what the, what the P U R C announces, which is the unit cost of electricity, now, there is that reduction, and that speaks to this data, Dr. Baumia editor.
So I'm telling you that, and then, who can tell the difference? Is it cheaper than it was in twenty sixteen? If you can answer that question, then what about me, I have a claim, they are not true, that, it is not cheaper today than it was then, so what is the, what is the argument about?
No, no, I, no, 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 I, I am not debating will be a wire, the others will be a on your, what I'm saying, they say, because we are educating the public, you know, hmm, eh, we have to put out what the facts are, and he, the fact, you know, from where I sit, and he say, here were the unit cost of electricity, and none of P U R C ever mandate to announce an increment or a decrement on, and so now, yeah, what, the statutory charges, eh, will be, oh, name was, eh, come on, and to the, eh, who can, based on the record, you know, eh, the end user tariff, what the consumer who would pay, you know, and no, no, what is, ah, V A T, eh, all the other things, service charge, this, I know, many, I be come on, and so now, what is, ah, electricity, eh, your friend is saying. Absolutely, into the net effect, you know, who has them in the, eh, come on, you may can say, when you look at.
Look, I say, I am the one who do a certain to the record, so I'm aware of, let's go to the Paris, eh, and that's. So I'm actually, yes, for this question, say, to put Baumia's claim to the test, is it cheaper to buy electricity today than it was in twenty sixteen? If the answer is yes, he has a basis, if the answer is no, he has no basis, I'm saying, the answer is no, it is more expensive to buy electricity now than it was in twenty sixteen. So, if someone else about me, I think, and so, you know, it does not make sense to the man listening to us on the street. You understand the point I'm making?
I, I get, I get, I get your point.
It is government that has to bear the fact, the same way, that about me, any, I'm a, eh, do, eh, but I'm a pretty much a man, I'm a, yeah, the, I'm a pretty much a man, I'm a, there is no room of escape for me.
No, I, I perfectly get your, your argument, the, the point that I'm making is to disaggregate the figures for people to appreciate what we are talking about, didn't he? I get, I get your argument, hmm.
Being the attitude, you tell me, for instance, that one of the things, the impact in, is the relation of C O D I R.
Maybe sorry.
The force of world influences that C O D I R.
Maybe sorry.
The force of world is impacted by exchange rate adjustment, C O D I R. In fact, the, the type, eh, the last time, eh, I know, eh, almost I say, exchange rate movement.
Yes, yes.
Let's say, exchange rate movement, you know, now, I'm a, I think that about, I know, the exchange rate, it is, it is, it is, eh, it is, eh, it is, that's it, yeah, yeah, because, do you ask, eh, as I say, five, no, up over, who should bear the blame, me, my grandpapa, or I'm a, so, when I learn about? It's in the cloud, yeah, do you know, eh, you know, let me now examine a few claims about, claims that, okay, I'm a kidding.
Yeah, on the promises, you know, right?
Good, good, hmm.
Okay, but, but, but even before that, you know, Felix, maybe I show, eh, still with the eh, electricity tariffs, you know, would you agree, say, say, we, all the other element eh, composing end user tariff, now, now, oh, center on the energy cost alone, eh, no, no, there has been some reduction, do you agree to that?
Let's say, there has been more reduction, aside of the end user, it's content.
No, 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 me, me, that's not what I'm asking, may say, on the energy cost, you know, do you agree?
The thing that influences the tire sector by three, you know, and factors within the control of government. Maybe with the exception of international fuel oil price. You know, I think, we have a lot of gas, and you should know, eh, but, eh, normally, you know, you should reduce the generation cost. In fact, it has made some changes for us, but the reason why the stock remains high, they say, she do not have the shooting. And instantly, they do affect fuel, take more from us, and instantly, the I P T has to pay more for fuel, who then compares them to demand safety from P U R, not P U R, why, whose duty is that to control the exchange rate? Is it yours, is it mine, or is it an artificial? If the country is unable to do that, now, the overall effect, in addition to all the discretionary charges, now, what I'm, 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 who should take the blame? My feet say, why you have, yeah, I say, on your, the, 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 the family of the community, they say, electricity is more expensive now than the time that I'm a, was criticizing President Mama, that is the bottom line.
Felix, my, my young call the other point, and I also hope say, who raising this, so?
Good, also, I'm a, my TV, my, I'm a TV.
Seventy eight percent, yes.
I mean, me, me, in the national, they can't ask me.
Could you, could you, I'm, 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 promises, no, I'm, I'm, three hundred and eighty eight, and he, out of three hundred and eighty eight, so I'm a ticket boxers, now, I'm a TV seventy eight percent out of three hundred and eighty eight.
In actual terms, you know, how many promises are there, and what are the specific promises? The, what they need to do, they must list the promises, and then list the corresponding sets of activity. When should be doing the picture, and I said, more and more media, you should be doing the picture, now, you tell me, this is huge figure, seventy eight percent. Now, with the specific central, it's now, eh, my, I'm a, just, yeah, I'm a.
No, almost eh, eh, what, who called deliveries dot gov dot G H, everything manifesto track, I need to be, eh, what?
Even the most prominent of their promises, you know, I'm a, you know, to finish. We have done our analysis, and they won't go past eighteen percent achievement. When we do this, and should be, eh, we will set up a platform and put out the facts as they are, in terms of specific promises and the corresponding performance. But, and I would make it, you know, we cannot go through all of them, but, yeah, so I will take just three, which are, what you call some of the. That about me, I have this one, ah, okay, now, after it, after a Ghanaian, okay, about them one, and I'm a, I'm a, I'm a, every year, they will send a million dollars to every constituency, which is at the end of every constituency, eh, every year, let me say, at, at the end of four years, you know, every constituency would have received four million dollars. I'm telling you as a matter of fact, that they have not fulfilled that promise, because twenty seventeen, they didn't send anything, twenty eighteen, the gear is so, and your twenty eighteen, any, sorry, twenty nineteen, any affiliates, and I did it, I can't tell you, but the promise was very specific. So starting from twenty seventeen, we, yeah, I will tell you the word, next, I'm a, I'm a, now, when compared to the delivery, and tell me whether it has been sufficient. It has not been sufficient, no constituency in Ghana has received four million dollars from President Africa, like it promised, it, it is a failure. I'll talk to you, I'm a, I'm a, he will build a factory in each district. At the time, oh, yeah, promise, you know, there were two hundred and sixteen districts, it is, even if you were to achieve the task here, at this now, this is where the time is, and that you will see to two to three, you have not delivered two hundred and sixteen packages. In fact, the last time, there's a, eh, media encounter with the, with the, media encounter, oh, last time, okay, I said, they are taking a lot of existing package, and I'm a, with similar package, meanwhile, that was not a promise, similar package is nothing new. Two G I T C, two free zone, and two direct government information, you have hundreds of companies, similar package. So if it was similar package, not him, I don't think anybody would have voted for it, because it was nothing new, the specific exact promise, was that they will build factories from scratch. They actually gave us a map, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a, specifically, where they do the factories, what we produce, and how many people we employ. The only way to access them is to take what they have done against what they promised, and I'm telling you as a matter of fact, that they have not fulfilled that promise to. And this why, they promised to build a bank in each village of the three mountain regions on the time, mountain, upper east, upper west. Would they let us receive the fact, say, they are sure of this now, you, you too, you see. In twenty eighteen, that about me, I'm a, of course, factory, all the mountain region, all the, in twenty eighteen alone, they will build five hundred and seventy banks. Also, I'm a, not the, a few days earlier, I know, have made provision for only hundred banks. As I said, you, they have not gone by the number of seventy banks, in fact, we expect thousands of banks in conformity with the exact promise. So I can tell you that that one two is a massive failure, I can tell you, I'm saying, Osha, I'm a, I can tell you, they will reduce borrowing. It is a specific promise to their manifestation, oh, be, the public debt has gone up by over one hundred billion Ghana series in three years. That is not a reduction, that is excessive increase, so that one two is a massive failure, they told us, so, they will reduce taxes. Oh, be, they took off a number of taxes, that they have improved more taxes, that have more direct impact on the people. I'm a, I'm saying, they will reduce the force of being business, at least, I refer you to the A D R, I'm a, they have documented it in a letter, it was a letter, said, your force of production has gone up, because of government policy, that introduction of D A T. You know, I think, the topic in November of twenty eighteen, and now, say, they have increased their budget because of the increase in D A T. Now, so, communication service, that is, they start it on to you and I, so they are, for that sake of, and I, I'm a, I'm a, that is not in conformity with the promise contained in the one degree manifestation, it is an exact formula, I will go on and on and give you why, I'm a, I'm a, on the, of this person by five percent, so I'm a, that is just another failure, that, the time they sent for us in the N D C, to do a thorough analysis and a justification on the manifestation promise. And you see, say, eh, someone, that's about me, I can't, eh, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a, you see?
Now, 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 I'm, I'm fancy, I'm not only fancy, I'm fancy.
As you may, I'm looking, say, even if they have pursued all their manifestation promises, they will be can live, which is that? The fulfillment of those promises must dramatically transform the life of Ghana. In terms of the economy, any, I'm a, there is not one item, eh, let, let go of my coffee, everything has gone up. Life is more difficult for ordinary than you today than in twenty sixteen. I'm a, when we were borrowing, they were criticizing us, saying, yeah, yeah, but the thing, yeah, the consumption, say, say, yeah, the way we're trying to expand it. Oh, be, me, me, Mr. Washa, eh, yeah, for some of them, I'm a, for you, I'm a, any documents, I'm a, the common finance committee, over the, I'm a, I'm a, we are using two point four billion of borrowed money to finance your business, which is the challenge of standard. Meanwhile, five hundred billion, now, my boss would say, eh, additional debt, I have a money. That is a level of capital expenditure, I'm a, to me, that you are, I'm a, I'm a, you know, I'm a, that we even have a policy in his name. Only policy, we go, eh, we do, meanwhile, repeat the test, I'm a, I'm a, he has, totally, absolutely, to his name.